Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 1st meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for today is Proverbs 3 verses 5 and 6. "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding; in all your ways submit to him, and he will make your paths straight." I'm sure you have a dog this morning, beautiful dog.
Hi there bud, look at you. Come here, come on, let's go out here. Oh, you're beautiful, come on, come on. Come here, come here, come here. Our featured dog this week is a male, about four-year-old pit. He's absolutely adorable, he's available for adoption now, great personality, and we have about thirty dogs that are kind of, look at you, oh, he's gonna make somebody a great pet. So stop by and see us. Come on, let's go.
Shake it off. I think he would let you scratch him for the rest of the day.
Look, see?
Like the one last week with Tony Ann, that dog wanted to go with Tony.
Dogs like being born people, too.
Yeah, I hear that.
Madam Clerk, under Resolutions Number 1, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as the Department of Assembly Chief for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez.
Madam Commissioner, I do have, what can I fold up first, sorry. I do have some potential new hires at the Collection Center that I wish to discuss with the Board. I do want to update you on our ongoing bargaining situation with Job and Family Services. Also, ongoing labor negotiations at the Sheriff's Department. And two matters of legal litigation that we're involved in. Both those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into executive session and talk about those matters identified. Thank you.
Approved away the reading in the minutes of October 25th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
911 approved an enter and agreement with Century Link Business to provide 911 emergency call handling software, Airbus Vesta, in connection with the support and maintenance for Lorraine County 911 Emergency Dispatch.
So moved.
Second.
I see Tracy's here, did you want to comment on this at all? Or, Mr. Cordez, did you want to start with the Airbus in the...
Well, I guess I could, I suppose. It's been a bit of a lengthy process. We examined three companies. They all have really great equipment. I'm really amazed at the new equipment, what it can do, and its capabilities. It was neck and neck. I will tell you, I was leaning towards a bit of a different company early on, and when Hal was with us, he had indicated that he had some strong support and desired some different things, and then we parted ways with Hal. It was the Board's desire to look more fully with tech support closer to home, with local resources and employment opportunities for those resources here. You had wanted that all along, and I kinda pushed in a different direction, and you gave me some movement in that. But you wanted me to go back and take a look again strongly at that, and we did, and we brought a team in to look at that. It took long, and I thought the third company was a little bit hard to get here on the ground. You wanted three looked at, we had only looked at two at that time, you wanted the third one looked at. That company, they had nice product, but their attention to us was not what I would call fascinating. It was tough. And then the follow-through with them was a little bit more painful than I had anticipated. I just didn't feel, we didn't feel special. If you don't feel special in the presentation and the follow-through on the presentation, you're not gonna feel, not gonna feel that when you're buying stuff and you have to install it. That's just my general feeling on it, so that really narrowed it down to the two. And then we went and did an onsite visit with some of the Airbus equipment with a team of folks, they seemed pretty impressed. I think Commissioner Kokoski, you were on that team for the visit. You know, we looked at some of the demonstrations down there, and it was really good equipment. I'm amazed at the capabilities and the advancements that have been made. I still like the ability to initiate a text message out. This equipment has the ability to answer text messages, which is a nice capability, you know, about seventy percent of our calls are now coming from cellular phones, and the ability to text is really a big enhancement. We won't be able to initiate any text message, but that's gonna be in the upgrade software. All the companies, the two, the other two companies didn't have that, indicated it's in the build in the near future. I don't know how much that will be used and whether it should be a driving force or not, but I did like that capability. Some folks I talked to thought it was really something that would maybe use, and other folks said initially they thought it was gonna be great and they didn't use it much. So it was a mixed bag on that.
Mostly around domestic abuse type cases, I think, where they were trying to get people to text messages.
Somebody, actually, you know, that wasn't really where they thought the most use would come from. It would be on the hang-ups, and when we call back, somebody dials 911, we have a requirement, not really a requirement, procedure, but almost every 911 follows the same procedure to make a call back. A lot of times those calls go unanswered. There's some, there is some data, it's only now being collected because it's a relatively new capability. There is some data that indicates that the frequency of returned texts, if that is called and texted out, that there's more chance of getting a reply by text than there is by voice. Again, it's a new capability, it's been out there for a while, and there is some, there is some data suggests that maybe people would respond to the text more fully on a hang-up and call back. But there hasn't been a huge amount of, you know, this is, we use this in domestic violences, huddled in the closet texting type. But I can see a scenario where that may, that may be usable. But those capabilities are gonna be developed into anybody's software going forward. I did, again, want to state that all the equipment was good equipment. For me, it was a difference between a Chevy, a Ford, a Chrysler. We won't talk about the, those foreign automobiles. But it was, it's hard to pull a preference. They'll all get you down the road, they'll all do a good job for you, that's my view of it. So it came down to a few things that the Board desired and what they wanted to do going forward. And again, I dropped that third company from consideration because I really, really wanted them to pay attention to us in a big way, and I just didn't feel it, if that makes any sense at all to you.
It's paid through 911 funding. I know some folks don't see 911 being as important as it really is in the community, but that's how it's funding.
Well, when you said the car scenario, the Chevy, the Ford, well, Ford is actually a business here in Lorraine County, and that's why we chose this vent, this company, because the tech support is here. So we're keeping our own people working and giving them additional work to do. So having Century Link as the tech support is very important. I did talk to our Director yesterday to make sure that she was on board with, you know, this company, and she has no reservations, and so I'm excited that we're finally gonna move forward with this.
About time. Well, again, the delay, we had wanted to, we were trying to accelerate, and we were pushing so hard to try to open before November, to have an open house so the public can really see what they were paying for with 911. I thought it was important with the levy coming up that they get a chance to put their hands on some of their product. We had a few delays in that, and it became apparent to me that I was stepping on the accelerator just too hard, and this was too important of a project to be moving that quickly with it. And then, of course, we had, we had changes in tech support right in the middle of this that really put a dent in things. So I thought that a, I don't always suggest this, a timeout was necessary to recapture where we were at, where we were going, and breathe a little bit, and then start the look forward and start the progress over again, and I'm glad we did that. When you lose, when you lose tech in the middle, and you lose that direction in the middle, keep going forward is not the answer. You need to stop, you need to pause, you need to regroup, and that's what we did. We now have different, we have two different tech supports on board, I'm feeling real comfortable now for the first time in a while in the team that we've re-collected. And of course, we also, our internal resource, we decided to let that go, and we're still looking for that piece, too. So we had a couple changes that occurred that told me that I needed to slow this process. There's an urgency, but it wasn't that great, and the chance of mistakes were there, that I did not feel that we should, we should try to make that before the November. So I'm anticipating now, late winter, early spring, to give this a real time to present itself. And I'm also happy with that, because that'll give us time to do an extensive amount more training than I was going to allocate for before, which I was always troubled with the window I had left for training and ramping into that, and I don't think I gave adequate consideration to that. So that gives me a little bit breathing room there, too. I was over at the building yesterday, you know, the outside's all done, all the grounds are done, it's been, it's really looking nice, and now we can concentrate on the interior work through the colder months, and the consoles are coming in, the equipment's gonna, are going to be coming in, and we got a lot of the equipment for the radio traffic, and all of that can be done. So I'm pretty encouraged, and we're also working on the building next door, a lot of work was going on there yesterday. So we're progressing nicely, and we should have, we should have an open house for the public as soon as the weather breaks, and we'll be able to make that move.
Let's do it once and do it right.
Yep.
Just want to thank you and Tracy for all the work you've been doing with the Quality Control Group in Alariah, and I know we meet with UH on a regular basis in the city of Alariah, and just very positive reports coming back, and, you know, we're always looking for ways to be better, and just want to thank you for your involvement in that and all that you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transit approved amendment number one to lease agreement with Fairview I Center, Inc. for office space at 6100 South Broadway, Suite 301 Lorraine. Amendment extends lease for three additional months, November 1st, 2017 through February 1st, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
Well, that was a lengthy agenda, wasn't it?
I know. The heck.
I don't have any additional comments this morning. I haven't even had a chance to get to my paperwork. I do see a purchase order here, so I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be doing something with them, but I'm gonna look at them while everybody else talks, I may have had to bring something from the floor. You guys are way too quick this morning, thank you.
Mr. Anis.
I do have a couple items of pending litigation that I would like to discuss with you in executive session.
Commissioners' report.
Well, Friday, congrats to Sheriff's Committee for a very successful fundraiser at the beautiful Lodge in New Russia Township. It's always very well attended, and the food is prepared by flingers, and it's always very well done. Saturday, congratulations to Ally and Carl Gunther for their beautiful beginning of their life together as a married couple. Ally is our Assistant Tony Shanahan's daughter, and it was one of the nicest weddings that I've ever been to, it was just beautiful, so congratulations, job well done there. Monday, I went to the construction site of the new K-9 agility course for the Lorraine Police Department. The Solid Ways Department secured a grant to accomplish this much-needed facility through the Keep Lorraine County Beautiful Organization. Along with the agility course, trees and shrubs, and a pollinator garden will also be being planted, which will be a nice improvement to that area. Monday afternoon, I attended my monthly Goodwill Board meeting, and I'm happy to report that we will soon be opening another Goodwill store in Sheffield Lake at the Shoreway Shopping Center, so stay tuned to that. That evening, I met with a friend of mine and a few others who are looking to do a fundraiser next November to raise money to combat the opiate epidemic. I invited Elaine Georges, who is the Director of the Alcohol and Drug Board, to give her input into some of the gaps in funding and where the money can go that is raised at this event. A couple of ideas was an advertising campaign for the See Something, Say Something, to get the drug dealers out of our neighborhoods, and also a hotline for addicts and their families to call to find out how and where to get help. This was just the first of many meetings to come. And then yesterday, congratulations to Catholic Charities on the grand opening of their men's homeless shelter. The Bishop was such a down-to-earth guy, very, very nice, I really enjoyed his speech yesterday. And then Ted spoke on our behalf and presented them with a proclamation from our Board. And this was a true collaboration between the county, the city, and Catholic Charities, and I am proud that we were able to be part of such a great accomplishment.
Don't forget the land bank and the port authorities.
Right, the land bank was able to get that building and cleanse it of back taxes and be able to make this happen for the city of Lorraine and the county.
And move over to the port after we did it through the land bank, move it to the port, and then move it to Catholic Charities. We have a lot of different moving parts that we're able to use now that keep everything clicking along. A few years ago, we would not have been able to move along continuing like this to get the results that we're getting today. A lot of it's not seen. In fact, we're, we just moved some buildings to Oberlin, we're working on that, some warehouses to put back in hopefully productive use or do whatever they want to do with them out there. It was only a few short years ago that, you know, land banks were not being looked at with the enthusiasm that they have today and the work that's being done by them. So it's, we need to probably do a report out in the next coming weeks about the activities in the last year. We've done a lot, we just, we've been busy with other stuff, and we haven't talked about it much.
Lois from Family Promise was there, I did a tour afterwards, and she's actually looking for a building in Alariah, so keep that in the back of our mind when we're looking at some of the land bank properties.
What kind?
Where she can house about ten families, so like a kind of a larger facility or a very big house, or I'm not sure.
Is it, is she looking for free, or is she looking?
Well, I don't know if we could do something similar to what we did here.
Because, you know, MRD, excuse me, the DD is selling that group home out there. That's set up to be a group home, and that's the, so I mean, that's available, but, you know, they, they're selling it.
Right, well, they're stretched on funds, just like all of these.
Getting a place for, getting a, just for clarification, getting a place where you may be able to put residents for several people, apartments or efficiencies, that's pretty challenging. That group home, I think, is already set for five or six, it's, so it's a turnkey, maybe they can, we should put them together, maybe they can figure something out that would work for them. I know it's on the market as a group home.
Well, it was nice taking the tour, actually, the third floor, when I went up there, it was my old office. I worked up there, yeah, I was, the Steelworkers Reemployment Program back in the early 90s, and I was trying to get laid off Steelworkers back to work, so it was, the office was still there, just like it was when I, not too much change up on the third floor, so, end of my report.
Yeah, busy week. Congratulations to organizers of the Issue Two Forum at Lorraine County Community College last week, very informative. The yes on two people sent a representative, the no on two sent nothing in regards to the prescription drug prices that's on our ballot this month. Also, congratulations Locata, again, a fantastic event. Mackenzie Phillips was in to speak about her addiction issues. They had a packed house at the Emerald Center in Avon. Again, great turnout as always. Tom Stuber, his wife Sue and their staff do a wonderful job getting people to show up and support their issues.
Is that the Pearls of Wisdom?
Yes.
Yes, Pearls of Wisdom.
It was good, huh?
Oh, it was great, it was sold out.
Out of my book, I just didn't get there. We had, I had tickets, just didn't make it.
Also, again, Sheriff's Committee, great fundraiser as always. Sherrod Brown had a great turnout for his spaghetti dinner on Sunday, revving everybody up for next year. Again, representing the Board at the St. Elizabeth Center, the OPACC in Lorraine, I got the opportunity to speak with the Bishop, great guy, things were, I mean, it's just a beautiful facility from how it started. Shred Day, November 4th, Saturday morning, nine until the trucks filled up till noon, we're doing a shred day at the Black River Landing in Lorraine. So bring your important documents you'd like to have shredded. It's a great public service we're able to provide through Lorraine County Solid Ways, the Board of Commissioners, and we actually had a grant to help pay for the shred truck. Congratulations to Lorraine County Visitors Bureau and everyone who participated. The burger battle, I made it to seven different places for burgers in the week.
Did you visit the doctor afterwards?
Five.
Ooh.
I went down to Grafton, because I looked at where you folks had been, and nobody had made it to Grafton. So I decided Friday night to drive to Grafton, and I got there at one minute to 10, and they had just closed the kitchen, so no burger for the administrator. I figured that was the only one, I think, that we hadn't captured between us, and I thought we would have them all, but I wasn't able to be successful. I got there, I guess it was, they do close the kitchen at 10, and it may have closed it a few minutes early because it wasn't a lot of business, and I wasn't able to get the burger down there.
I just didn't make it to the seafood ones, burgers burgered me, so I'm more of a beef kind of guy, so.
That's because you're in Neanderthal.
Yes, I am, that's fine, I can be in Neanderthal. But I also made all the cupcake places except Medina, because I never got a reason down to Medina. But every, everybody I spoke to, the restaurant people and the bakery people, said they had fantastic turnout for this, and what a great idea it was to pump business.
Yes, and you ate burgers and cupcakes in the same day, too.
Yes, I did, I took them together. If I went to a burger place, had a cupcake place nearby, I picked up.
You know, you called me, I know.
Like Betty Blair told me, eat dessert first, you may not have room afterwards. So I just made sure I had a cupcake and the burger there, but it was a great, great job. People couldn't speak highly enough about our Visitors Bureau, Amanda in particular at the cupcake places, what a great job she did and how she helped them through all of this, so. Again, also, this week, and through Tuesday of next week, please get out and exercise your right to vote. You have a couple of state issues on there, and the county has three issues. We have renewal of tuberculosis clinic, no increased taxes, we have a renewal of the Drug Task Force money, no new taxes, and a renewal of the 911 levy on the ballot, no new taxes. End of my report. I sound like Matt there, I talked so long.
Oh, geez, wow, yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, I tried to get down to the Unicorn in Grafton, too, for some reason, I thought they were open for lunch, and I drove down there Friday, and they weren't open, they don't open until four, I guess, so. But just want to also congratulate the Visitors Bureau for all the work they've done on these recent promotions. The important thing is just getting a buzz about Lorraine County, have people talking about Lorraine County and being curious and hearing, wow, hearing all kinds of things about Lorraine County, gotta get over there, take a look, spend some money, do some shopping, eat at some of the restaurants, and so it's all part of the new, new direction we have for the Visitors Bureau, and we're gonna be working on some exciting promotions and opportunities for the New Year as well, too. The Issue Two Forum, found it to be informative, it was disappointing, I've been to a couple of these forums now, and the no people have yet to send a representative, I don't know what that's all about, but nonetheless, found it to be informative, a lot of good questions, it was interested, interesting having a pharmacist in the room when we were having these discussions, and, but, once again, it just requires that you do your homework before you vote, and that information, I understand, on the Lorraine County Board of Elections website, they've actually listed the information that both sides have to submit to the state regarding the issue, so you can get more clarification there. In fact, had a chance to hear Paul Adams on WEOL radios, I was driving in, and boy, I gotta tell you, we're lucky to have somebody like Paul over there helping to run the place. Paul is just well-informed and knows his stuff, he used to work for the Secretary of State's Office, and can't say enough good things about how Paul is very knowledgeable on the topic. And yes, I would strongly encourage you to get out and vote, vote early, I know I voted early, and, but make sure that you, that you get out and vote, a lot of important issues to decide on. Want to congratulate Tom Stuber and his whole team on the Locata Pearl Wisdom Dinner, packed house. I don't think there was really a seat left, it was, it was packed. And the Mackenzie Phillips coming in from California to share her story, you know, interesting, back in the 70s, when that show was on one day at a time, the info said that she was making $47,000 a week. Imagine back in the 70s, making $47,000 a week, but that didn't keep her from having addiction issues, and, so, but I thought she was very insightful and just a great event, but it just gets bigger and bigger every year. Congratulations Sheriff's Committee with what's always one of my favorite barbecues every single year over there at New Russia. Congratulations to Toni and her family with Ally and Carl. Yeah, couldn't agree more, that was a beautiful wedding. I'm glad I wasn't paying for it, but it was a beautiful wedding. Just great, and just a lovely, lovely couple, great family, and my wife and I kept saying how much, your daughter looks just like you, you guys look like sisters, it's amazing. So, the Lorraine International Festival held the Oktoberfest German Dinner at St. Mary's in Lorraine. Had a chance to stop by there, in fact, before I came to the wedding, so I was quite stuffed after the delicious meal that we had. Sherrod Brown, amazing turnout, people just kept coming and coming and coming into the room, and, you know, very, a very popular public servant here in Lorraine County, and so if that's, if that's any indication, I think a lot of Sherrod Brown supporters will definitely be out next year. Fifteen years of progress for the Folger House in Avon Lake, the Avon Lake Historical Society held an event there, was not able to attend, but that whole group is just doing, doing amazing work preserving the history of the community of Avon Lake. And again, this Board continues to demonstrate the importance of working in partnership with our partners here in Lorraine County through the Land Bank, the city of Lorraine, the Diocese of Cleveland, putting together something that was badly needed, the homeless shelter there in Lorraine. And it was great to see Bishop Perez come to the community, I've yet to have a chance to meet him, wasn't able to be there yesterday, but it's just another example of how we're working together in partnership, getting things done to help people in the community. And that completes my report.
More correspondence?
I move the reading be waved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the Board this morning? Just come up, give us your name and where you're from, and you get three minutes.
My name is Mary Heck, I live at 41629 Hazelwood Street, Alaria Township. I see you have not settled the strike and no contract for your county workers. Your clients are still hurting, and it will get worse with Thanksgiving, Christmas coming, but you don't care.[1754.21] said by more than me, by a lot of people out in public. They don't like what's going on. And they will not vote for you again when you come up for reelection. You don't think this hurts. It will in the future. You go to the paper, you say things about the strike that are not the whole truth. So you look good, and they look bad. I would like to say that Matt and Ted, you sure did take off when you saw your workers at the fundraiser. You took... You did not want to talk to them, I guess. You don't care about us taxpayers, or you wouldn't have put a tax on us that we did not vote for and do not like. You will not face your employees that are working six days a week, 12 hours a day, and still not getting everything done. If you... What if one of them can't take the pressure anymore? And I understand this is a lot of pressure on some of them workers. And they decide to get out after the people on the picket line with a gun or any weapon. If this happens before in workplaces, and don't think it can't happen again here. You need to get this settled before it happens. I don't think there's so-called security guards to stop anybody because they just try to intimidate the workers and call the Elyria Township Fire Department and waste their time on a burn barrel that the township has approved. The strikers are standing out there in the weather and everything because they believe in a cause. Apparently, you don't believe in settling anything. You put the taxes on the ballot this time. You say they're renewals. I hope they all fail. I will vote against them. I will be the one in line to vote you out of office if you run again. And I will work as hard as I can when I go to the polls to fight against you. Also, I would like to wonder, what would happen if the state investigated these county commissioners like they did in Cuyahoga County and find any corruption here? I'm sure where there's politics, there's corruption.
Bring them in.
Please.
Please.
Would welcome that.
Also, I would like to know, why is it you're wasting more of my county tax dollars on par and attempt service? I hope these people are well qualified to be in that building with private information of patients, clients, and their social security numbers, their tax reports. Everything is in there. And these people had better be highly qualified to be there because this could cause a lot of trouble for the county down the road if the clients decide to do something about it.
Thank you, Ms. Heck. Your three minutes is up, ma'am. Thank you very much for your comments.
You're not welcome.
Well, I was just being polite. Wasn't really grateful. Anybody else? Seeing none, I move that we go into... Oh. Are you leaving? Okay. Move that we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Caleb.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.